Good evening, everybody. My name is Herman G. Hernandez and I'm the Executive Director of Los Cien Sonoma County, the premier leadership group of the Northern Bay Area. We are very excited to be hosting one of our panels, virtual panels tonight, featuring the candidates running for the Petaluma City Council Districts four, five, and six. Si necesita traducción? Buenas noches a todos. Yo me llamo Germán Gabriel Hernández y soy el director ejecutivo de Los Cien Sonoma County, el mejor grupo de liderazgo de la Bahía del Norte aquí en el condado de Sonoma. Elliot, Elliot ya está bailando. Pero si necesita traducción, en la parte de abajo de la pantalla, hay un botón que dice translation. Si hace un click ahí, va a escuchar la voz de la famosa Betsy Chavez. Ella va a ser nuestra traductora para este evento. Muchísimas gracias a Betsy. So, before we begin, we just want to welcome everybody once again and we really want to thank the candidates running for the city of Petaluma for sharing some time and energy. We know that campaigning is not an easy task and we just appreciate them being with us this evening. I want to give a huge shout out to our rock star group of volunteers, our board member Elliot Enriquez, board member Ana Tamayo, and our volunteer extraordinaire Ray Holly for helping us put tonight's forum together. We also want to give a big shout out to our premier partners and our game changers because without you, Los Cien would not be able to do the work that we get to do every day. So, thank you to Kaiser Permanente, Ag and Open Space Sonoma County, Petaluma Health Center, Luther Burbank Center for the Arts, Wine Country Radio, Redwood Credit Union, The Press Democrat La Prensa, Sutter Health, Sonoma Clean Power, the Community Foundation Sonoma County, Santa Rosa Community Health, Nexo Media, and the United Way of the Wine Country. We also want to give a special shout out to our strategic partners and promotional partners, the American Association of University Women, and of course, the lovely League of Women Voters for helping us make these forums possible. And before I pass the mic over to the dapper-looking Elliot Enriquez, I would be remiss if I didn't invite everybody that's joining us tonight to our quinceañera, our fifteenth birthday honoring the work of many Latino and Latinx and Latinx community members over the last fifteen years and their impact in Sonoma County. That event is on November eighth. It's at the Luther Burbank Center and we're very excited to be celebrating the impact that we've all had here in our community. So you're all invited. And now, I'd like to introduce the hosts for this evening, our moderator and Los Cien Board Member Elliot Enriquez. Elliot is the Director of Government and Community Relations at the Petaluma Health Center and a former recovering political consultant. Pause for a long moment, then welcome Elliot. Oh, whoops, I wasn't supposed to read that part. Welcome to Elliot. Thank you so much for being with us, man. Have a good, have a good forum.
Thank you, Herman. I appreciate it. Buenas noches a todos. I hope everyone's doing well. Thank you for being with us. If you're on the Zoom, if you're on Facebook, wherever you're catching this, I really appreciate it. Once again, Herman, thank you and the team. As you all know, Los Cien is a group focused on Latin leadership and empowerment in Sonoma County. For fifteen years now, Los Cien has produced more than a hundred formal community awareness building conversations. Los Cien's vision is a vision of orgullo, which means pride and equity for the Latin community in Sonoma County. Los Cien continues to work to advance belonging, trust, and equity for and with our whole community by convening leaders and engaging in hard and difficult conversations even when nobody wants to have them. Our intention is always to facilitate honest dialogue and elevate understanding that what affects the Latin community affects everyone who calls Sonoma County home. Thanks to our candidates and our audience for your participation in tonight's program. Audience members, everyone who's listening, watching, you're invited to write and share your questions in the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. For members watching and listening to this program on Facebook Live, you can share your questions in the comment area. Los Cien Board Members and volunteers who have been very generous with their time this evening will share these questions with me throughout the evening. We do have a few questions for each of the candidates that we're going to begin this program off with. For each question, I'm going to announce the order in which the speakers will answer and the time that the candidates will have to respond. We are hoping to have a good conversation with Candor about important issues in the city of Petaluma. Speakers, please make sure that you can see my great friend and colleague Ana Maria on your screen. She'll be keeping track of time and letting you know when your time is winding down or has expired. I also may ask follow-up questions or clarifications to candidates' answers if time permits. We're excited to hear from our candidates and each of our questions and we're going to get started with that in a few moments. But first, I kind of want to just explain the layout for tonight's evening. As you all know, we have a total of seven candidates running in Petaluma and they're all broken down within three city districts. So we're going to start off the evening in District Four where we have Mr. Frank Quint and Jeffrey J. After that, we're going to go to District Six where we have Lance King, Councilmember Brian Barnacle, and Councilmember Mike Healy, if he's able to be with us this evening. And lastly, we're going to end in District Five with Mr. Alexander DeCarli and also Mr. Blake Roper. But first, I want to introduce you to our first two candidates for this evening, which is Mr. Frank Quint and Mr. Jeffrey J. Good evening. Welcome, welcome. Mr. J, you are on mute, so I just want to make sure that you have that going. So first, I'd like to start off with some introductions. We're going to start off with Mr. Frank Quint. Mr. Frank Quint, you have ninety seconds for an introduction.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, hello. Thank you for inviting me. I feel honored to be here and I really appreciate it. My name is Frank Quint. I'm a newcomer to politics. This is my first, my first run for city office. I come from a working-class family. I grew up in a small Midwest town that was a factory town surrounded by agriculture. Right out of high school, I joined the military and after serving a couple of tours abroad, I came home to go to college where I earned my bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's in business. After graduating, I continued my career in transportation where I've worked for some large companies like Target and my current employer Restoration Hardware, where I've been able to put that accounting and MBA background to good use managing transportation budgets in excess of a hundred million dollars. I look forward to bringing my strong financial and accounting background to city council. I'm also proud to have served on Petaluma's pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee and our transit advisory committee and my wife and I, my wife and I are raising our eleven-year-old son, Jackson, on the east side of Petaluma. He currently goes to La Tracera School and we're just really excited to be here and be part of this. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Quint. Mr. J, Mr. J, welcome to this evening. You have ninety seconds.
Thanks very much. Absolutely. Thanks for the invite. I call by JJ. If you call me Jeffrey, I may not pay attention. But I am also new to politics. I've been in Petaluma for twenty-nine years now, have been involved in the community in a variety of fashions. I've served on the Wad District Site Council Board. I served on the Chernobyl Children's Project Board, was involved with Petaluma American Little League, both as a coach and on their board. I'm also from the Midwest, like Frank. A little different path. I ran away from home when I was sixteen, never went back, but finally made my way to college. And I earned a degree in theoretical computer science and a master's in computer graphics. Spent the early part of my career doing computer games and working in telephony for AT&amp;T Bell Labs. Made my way to California to join Pixar and work in the animation industry where I currently work at DreamWorks Animation. In town for a brief time, I had Petaluma Hills Brewing Company, so I'm familiar with the business environment in Petaluma. And glad to be here.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So we welcome the two of you this evening. Over the course of the next thirty minutes, we are hoping to better understand in practical terms how each of you as candidates would address key issues confronting the city of Petaluma. So, I have my first question ready. I hope you gentlemen are ready as well. The order for this question in terms of answering it, I'm going to have Mr. Quint go first and then Mr. JJ is going to go next. All right? So, question number one for the both of you. The Latin population is increasing and is now twenty-one percent in Petaluma. And even higher, thirty-five percent in the Petaluma City Schools. Yet, there are no Latin Petaluma City Council members and few Latin members of the city's commissions and boards. Here's my question. What will you do to increase and diversify representation so that Petaluma is represented by elected and appointed officials who can speak for the whole community? Mr. Quint, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, it's a, it's a really good question and, and you know, it wasn't lost on me if, if folks in, you know, in this audience saw The Press Democrat, The Argus Courier, when those papers announced the slate of candidates and, you know, great pictures of all of us. We're all great-looking guys, but we're also all very white. Most of us, with the exception of Blake and Brian, are older. Well, oh, sorry. Alex as well. Anyway, old white guys is where I'm going with that and, you know, it's clear, especially living on the east side, that the Latin population is a, you know, it's, it's, it's a large part of our community and, and, and I feel like as a, you know, as a, as a city council, we need to do more to encourage participation. We need to continue to work with nonprofit groups like Los Cien and, and there are other leadership groups in the community that we can work with to foster and mentor, find those people who have an interest in serving and, and, and be a mentor for them. Help them understand what steps they need to take to get elected and support them through the process, for sure.
Perfect. Perfect timing. Thank you, Mr. Quint. Mr. JJ, up next, ninety seconds.
Yeah, as, as an older white guy, I agree with a lot of what Frank said. The, the issue for me is, I'm, as a non-member of the Latin community, I don't know all the issues that, that need to be dealt with, so I have to become, I have to become used to that. I need to have these conversations and i-if I'm on city council certainly to understand how to draw more participation in government. I, I was encouraged when Petaluma went to a district model, the intent of which is to provide diverse communities a bigger voice in city government. The problem is with only six districts, we wind up getting the majority representation, you know, white, white guys again. So, I, I don't know, I don't know if the answer maybe is to, you know, zero in on maybe smaller districts or how do we find? Or I think the right answer though is how do you find people? How do you get people? How do you encourage them to step up into leadership roles and, and throw their head in the ring for something like this?
And how would you encourage them?
I, I, I'd have to have the dialogue to discover what would motivate. Time's up. Sorry.
Perfect. Time is up. All right. Question number two, the order, we're going to start off with Mr. JJ and then we're going to hand it off to Mr. Quint. Since 2022, Petaluma has had a tenant protection ordinance that guarantees rights for the city's tenants beyond the state's minimum requirements. The Tenant Protection Act of 2019 encouraged, but did not mandate, local jurisdictions to increase protections by local ordinance. Petaluma was the first jurisdiction in the county to increase rental protections, recently followed by the county itself. Petaluma tenants celebrated the ordinance but have said that it doesn't go far enough, exempting owners with three or fewer rental units, likely representing around two million or more in real estate assets. Housing providers state that the regulations are onerous and likely to push housing stock off the rental market through conversion or sale. Here's the question. What is your position on the tenant protection ordinance? And are there any aspects that you would change, either augmenting or reducing protections? Mr. JJ, you have ninety seconds.
Well, it's going to be challenging for me to answer that. I'm not familiar with the ordinance. I do, I, I, I do know that I favor strong protection for tenants, especially for renters. With, what's the term? When, when you can be asked to move out and for no cause, right? Or, I forget the correct term, but let's say the landlord wants to move his family into your home. I, I, I favor the types of protections that would provide for, that would require the, the landlord in that situation to provide funds to help that family move out. I know that many homeowners or many landlords would oppose that. But when you're going to, when you're going to evict somebody without cause, you need to provide some type of soft landing for that. I think rent protections are, are a great, or rent caps are a great idea, especially in our market where the median rent, I believe, is well over two thousand dollars a month. So, I think businesses landlord or landlords need to find ways to make that work financially.
Great. Thank you, Mr. J. Mr. Quint, you're ninety seconds.
Thank you. Yeah, so Petaluma, what, what, what's made Petaluma a great city throughout its history is that, you know, it, it has an eclectic group of people. You know, we're not Marin. We're, you know, we're Petaluma, we're Sonoma and we've got a diverse population. But that's changing because housing prices have just become so crazy expensive in Petaluma with the housing shortage. And people who are faced with losing their, you know, if they're renting and they're faced with losing that, there's nowhere else in Petaluma for them to go. They're going to have to go north or somewhere else. And I don't think we want to lose our working-class folks. And so, I support rent and tenant protections. We need to absolutely try to help our working class in Petaluma while we continue to build housing stock to help balance the, the supply, to bring, bring it down. So, I, I, I do, I, I would also say I'm in favor of policy that promotes local ownership of rental property as opposed to outside corporations. And so whatever policy, like I just think our rent, our rental units are much better when they're owned by local people. And so our policy needs to be aware of that and take that into consideration as we consider it.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Quint. All right, so for the next question, Mr. Quint, you will go first, followed by Mr. J. Question number three. The downtown housing and economic opportunity overlay proposes to modify building height limits, lock coverage and floor area ratios in key parts of downtown to encourage new mixed-use and housing developments. However, there are concerns about how these changes might impact the character of downtown and whether affordable housing or community benefits will actually materialize. How will you ensure that these developments, such as the EKN Appalachian Hotel project, will contribute positively to the downtown economy while preserving its historic charm and providing tangible benefits like affordable housing? Mr. Quint?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, one of the, one of the things that Petaluma really needs is additional economic development. I haven't come out strongly opposed of the overlay. Well, when I think about the overlay, the, the folks who support the overlay, they're trying to achieve two things. One, they're trying to improve and increase economic development and they're trying to reduce blight. Because, you know, a lot of people don't, you know, consider it, but there are parts of our downtown that are blight and, and the folks that are pushing the overlay really want to address those issues. I think those are valid issues and, and, and I know there's a, a, a large contingent of opposition to that. I know that three of our candidates are, are, are running on a platform of no overlay, save the downtown. But I think, I don't think it has to be an either-or proposition. I, if, if elected, I would work very hard with our city council and our community members to come, to come to a solution that helps address the problem of economic development, additional housing that's appropriate, that fits with our culture and fits with our community. So, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quint. Mr. J, ninety seconds.
Yeah, the, the overlay, I think, exists just for the purpose of building the EKN Hotel. I'm not convinced. I'm, I'm also, I am opposed to the overlay in its current form. I don't think it adequately addresses issues like parking, like the impact on the utilities that would require, be required if you're going to build up. I, I, I'm not convinced. I looked at the numbers for the EKN Hotel and the projections for the amount of revenue that the city would get, which would be great if it happened. Those numbers don't seem to add up unless they have, they achieve a hundred percent occupancy rate at a certain dollar amount, you know, four hundred something a night. So I have, I have real concerns. As, as much as I add, I, I support the notion of bringing in business into the, into downtown. I think tourism is great. It brings in dollars. I'm, I'm, I have concerns about the hotel as planned with parking impact. Will it actually achieve its revenue projections? And I don't think the overlay specifically addresses anything to do for affordable housing. And I'm, the time, sorry.
Great. No, thank you, Mr. J. All right, question number four. It's more of a follow-up question. But we are going to start off with Mr. J and then we'll follow up with Mr. Quint's answer. So question number four, the follow-up. Petaluma has an ongoing housing affordability crisis. How will each of you ensure that affordable housing developments are prioritized over luxury developments, especially in areas close to public transit? What will you do if developers push back? Mr. J, eighty seconds.
Yeah, I, I support a policy of, as, as great as it is to own a single-family home, for myself, that's not how we started off. The only thing we could afford was a quadplex, four units in one building. That was our first home. And I think for affordable housing, we have to really seriously consider policies that support as we fill in, as we do more infill building, multi-unit homes, multi, or mixed-use development. If we, I, I, in an ideal world, if the overlay were to pass, it would actually have policies in place to support lower-cost development so that that could be passed on and we could then supply a higher density living downtown that's more affordable. Again, I have my doubts that that's achievable, given the cost of construction and the, the inability, the, the lack of oversight so far that I've seen on that. But I would encourage i-if on city council policies that would support housing, in fact, one thing, very little time, one thing to address is the city mandates, I think, fifteen percent minimum. Why not up that?
Yeah. Simple. Thank you, Mr. J. All right, Mr. Quint, you have ninety seconds.
Yes, sir. So I think, again, I, I mentioned housing earlier. I think it's one of our two main existential issues in, in our town, in our community, in California in general. And in Petaluma, I think there's a couple of policy things that need to be addressed right, right away. One of which is much of our zoning is restricted to building, you know, one-unit house on a six-thousand-square-foot lot. And that's only going to bring in larger luxury homes. So we need to address zoning where it needs to happen. And, and then our incentive structure needs to change. Currently, right now, developer fees are based on a, 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 it incentivizes developers to build larger homes and that needs to be changed to incentivize building, you know, multi-unit or smaller, more affordable homes that are directed towards our workforce and our working class. Secondly, I would continue to work with some of the great organizations out there. I'm, I'm, I'm excited to see MidPen Housing just, you know, they just completed their project on 414 Petaluma Boulevard North. We've got Washington Commons coming in soon, but, but we just need to continue to work with those organizations and bring those units wherever we can. Lastly, I'd like to say we really do need a mix of different types of housing throughout the city for, for all different types of folks.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Quint. Question number five, we're going to start off with you, Mr. Quint, and then we'll go with you, Mr. J. Again, ninety seconds to answer. We recognize that school resource officers, also known as SROs, are currently not in the table in Petaluma. But many other cities utilize them with a cost-sharing model between the city and the school district. Research shows that SROs have been associated with negative impacts on students of color, especially in terms of higher rates of discipline and arrest. For example, studies have shown that black students are disproportionately impacted by school-based arrests and referrals to law enforcement. Given these concerns, what is your stance on the use of SROs in Petaluma? And how do you plan to ensure that student safety measures in schools are equitable and non-discriminatory for our students? Mr. Quint, you have ninety seconds.
Sure. So this is an issue that hits home, excuse me. It hits home for me. My eleven-year-old son is, is a biracial, brown skin, textured hair. And I think about, you know, all the time when he grows up or as he's growing, what issues like this he's going to face. And so, it is, it is a topic that I, you know, I think about quite a bit and it concerns me. I can, I can share that I, I feel like if we've got hotspots within our schools that need support from law enforcement, we need to work with law enforcement in a way that doesn't repeat the same mistakes of the past. And one of the things that I'm excited about, I've been, you know, I've spent some time talking to our chief of police, getting to know our policing model better. I've, I've actually joined and I'm attending right now the Petaluma Police Academy so that I can be more informed and more educated for our local law enforcement. It's the Community Police Academy. So, so every Tuesday night for three hours, you can find me down at the PD. I can say that our officers in Petaluma really are mindful of this. They're trying to, to They're trying to to uh to to approach this. They understand the the sins of the past. And I would uh just continue to support them on that on that measure.
So would you support SROs in school districts or no?
No, I would not support SROs uh currently um. Uh yeah, I wouldn't support them, but I do, we do need to offer support to schools. That are dealing with violence.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Jay, ninety seconds.
Yeah, um I I support the notion of an SRO, but as as far away from policing as possible. Like uh when when Frank mentioned, you know, the police, um I always think that when when you're dealing with. Um uh junior and and high school uh students, the last thing you need is is a cop. Uh um you know, kind of hurting them around. So the. You know, the the schools do need the support, especially for students that come from a more uh troubled background. Um and and I think if that support, wherever that support comes from, uh like I said, um I I don't. I'm not an advocate of, you know, uh. Police wannabes using that as a stepping stone to get into, you know, policing. Um that said, any type of support needs to have uh thorough um. Uh diversity training, you have to, um and and this brings to issue why. Um uh students of color tend to be um targeted more is because of internal biases. So we need to make sure that any type of support that that we would that we would ask. We would encourage in there would, they would get that uh diversity training so that they know how to deal with. Um um a a wider variety of students.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Jay, time is up. Thank you so much for your honest questions, I mean, your honest answers and for being open and and being here with us tonight. Uh really appreciate it. Uh now, uh please don't leave though, because we're gonna have everybody come back for the last thirty minutes. And we're gonna be answering questions from the audience at that time. Uh so now at this moment, um if possible, uh if we could please have. Um candidates from District Six, Mr. Lance Keen, Councilman. Uh Brian Barnacle and Mr. Councilman, uh Mr. Healy, if he is with us. So, Herman, if you could please work your magic and allow us for a change of candidates. Mr. Quinn, thank you so much. Again, Mr. Jay, thank you so much again. Really appreciate it. Had a great time and I will see you in a few moments.
Thank you, everybody.
Do we have our candidates with us? All right. Mr. Keen, good evening, welcome. Can you hear me? All right.
I can hear you.
Councilmember Barnacle, good evening, welcome. All right, so it looks like we are missing Councilmember Healy. So we're gonna move along uh with the questions for this evening. But before we get started, I'd like to give each of you ninety seconds um to do your introduction, so. Uh Mr. Keen, if you could start us off, you have ninety seconds for your introduction, please. The mic is yours.
Okay, uh my name is Lance Keen. I've been a resident of Petaluma for twenty-two years. I used to run a gallery downtown for fifteen years, the Riverfront Art Gallery. And I've been involved in politics, local politics for quite a while. In fact, my degree is in politics. And um I running to try to change some of the ways we do things in town. Um uh make sure that our planning is makes sense and also make the process more open for people. Um it seems like our city is not listening very well to this residents of Petaluma. Um I am running against the overlay as one of my positions and we can talk about that later. And uh I also taught at Petaluma High for a few years, so I'm very familiar with the schools. And also I've in involved with various nonprofits in town. Um so I definitely um have been involved behind the scenes and this is the first time I'm actually running for office myself.
Great, thank you so much. Uh Councilmember Barnacle, the floor is yours.
Thank you and thank you for having us. Um my name is Brian Barnacle and I'm running to represent District Six on the council. Um I grew up in Petaluma on a small farm and I graduated from Petaluma High School. Then I went to San Rosa Junior College and then got my degree in city planning. Um today, I live uh in a small home with my wife and our two-month-old daughter. Um I was elected in twenty twenty when we had the worst roads in the Bay Area and we were facing bankruptcy. And I'm really proud that in four short years, we rebuilt our city. And today, we're our parks, our public safety department and and our uh public works department are fully staffed. Um we cleaned up the the large homeless encampments and we're um we're making a lot of progress on different fronts. And I just feel like we're, I'm just getting started. Um we, you know, we absolutely have a housing crisis. And I've um I've been the leader on our council in addressing affordable housing and protecting renters. Um making public transit free and making our streets safer for everybody. Um we've got a lot more work to do on our roads and filling potholes, repairing our sidewalks, expanding public transit and making our streets safer. Um and I'm I'm just honored to to be serving on the city council and representing um representing, you know, Petalumans. Um after just one term, I've been endorsed by our current mayor and our past three mayors. Our local firefighters, teachers and police unions, our environmental groups, um several labor unions. And dozens of nonprofit business and community leaders, and I'm uh hope to earn your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Barnacle. Uh so for our first question, um in terms of answering. Uh Councilmember Barnacle, you will go first and Mr. Keen, you will go second. So for the first question, the Latin population is increasing and is now twenty-one percent in Petaluma. And even higher, thirty-five percent in Petaluma City Schools. Yet there are no Latin Petaluma City Council members and few Latin members of the city's commissions and boards. What will you do to increase and diversify representation? So that Petaluma is represented by elected and appointed officials who can speak for the whole community. Mr. Barnacle, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is an issue that um before I ran for city council in twenty twenty, we were um, there was a group of us that were actually looking for. Uh um people of color to uh to run for city council. And um what we found is is that the the time commitment and the lack of pay were two big barriers for um for working people. And that's why I stood stood up and and did it. Um since we got on the council, we've uh done done work to translate, um bring translation into our city council meetings. So that um it is accessible, more accessible. Um but I think, you know, one of the things that everybody up here who who's running for office can say is that running a campaign is is tough. And it takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of support from people. And um I don't plan to run again, um but what I plan to do over, because I wanna I wanna coach soccer. Um and and be a dad when my my daughter turns four. Um but what I can say is is that I wanna help someone of color uh get elected in District Six. And so that means helping them set up their campaign, helping them with fundraising. Um and helping them um bring the support in the that I have around me. That's allowed me to run a campaign and allowed me to get elected. Um because ultimately, it takes it it takes a community to get get someone elected. And um I'm committed in my, you know, after I win this election. Um to make sure that the person who replaces me in four years um is a person of color.
Thank you, Councilman Barnacle. Mr. Keen, the floor is yours.
Yeah, as Brian said, um it's very tough to run for city council because it's largely an unpaid position. So that really discriminates against people who don't have funds or um time to do that. So I think uh changing that compensation would go a long way as far as running for city council, but that's part of the city charter and. Um that's another issue which we can't address in the campaign. Um I do believe that um having things uh in Spanish and English is very important. Um to help with outreach. Um I know that from being a teacher at Petaluma High, you know, there's lots of uh. Hispanic students there and it it's hard to um keep people from being into their own little groups and cliques and things like that. So there has to be ways of bringing people together, um and especially maybe working through nonprofits like Losián and and Otros. Places like that. Um I actually grew up in the Central Valley, so um half of my friends were Hispanic. Yeah, I remember as a little kid, I was wondering why my best friend was named Jesus, but eventually I learned Spanish and I. Um learned about that thing. But yeah, it's hard to do outreach and people are very busy, especially uh people of color. They have less income, they're busy, it's hard to get involved.
Mr. Keen, is there anything in particular that you would do to increase?
Well, um just to make sure that things are bilingual as much as possible and possibly. Identify um groups that work with Hispanics. I know that. Just being a part of nonprofits, it's hard to bring people in of color and other ethnic backgrounds. It's just. Um this is a very white town, so it's very hard to do outreach.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh question number two, uh the order to answer, we're gonna start off with you, Mr. Keen. And then we're gonna follow up with uh Councilman Barnacle. Since twenty twenty-two, Petaluma has had a tenant protection ordinance that guarantees rights for the city's tenants. Beyond the state's minimum requirements. The Ten- the Tenant Protection Act of twenty nineteen encouraged, but did not mandate. Local jurisdictions to increase protections by local ordinance. Petaluma was the first jurisdiction in the county to increase renter protections, recently followed by the county itself. Petaluma tenants celebrated the ordinance, but have said that it doesn't go far enough. Exempting owners with three or fewer rental units, likely representing two million or more in real estate assets. Housing providers state that the regulations are onerous and likely to push housing stock off the rental market through conversion or sale. What is your position on the tenant protection ordinance? And are there any aspects that you would change, either augment or reduce the protections? Mr. Keen?
So since I haven't been in office, I'm not totally familiar with our local ordinance, but I definitely support uh protections for um tenants. Um I know many people that lose their rental situation and they literally have to leave the area. They have to leave the state sometimes. And we do need to have a diversity of housing to allow people in different job types and. Family situations to be able to remain in Petaluma. So I do certainly support tenant protections. I don't know the details, but um as a council member, I would um definitely listen to the public and see what. If there's some kind of consensus that can be made between landlords and tenants. Um I know that. Some landlords complain about any regulation and uh tenants, you know, uh they wanna stay in their home. And I definitely support uh things like making sure that rent increases don't exceed a certain amount each year. And that there's adequate notice of, you know, if they're gonna be asked to move and also making sure that the landlords. Properly take care of their properties so that the tenants can live in a nice situation.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Keen. Mr. Barnacle, you're up.
Thank you. Um I'll say that I'm very familiar with our tenant protection ordinance. Because um I was one of the two council members who really uh championed our um strengthening them. Um and I'm, the things that we focused on were providing relocation assistance for no-fault eviction. So if a landlord was moving in, their family member, um we increased the amount of money that gets paid to the existing tenant. So that they don't wind up on the street. Um we provided protections for victims of domestic violence. So that um if uh someone gets um beat up by their partner, they aren't um. They aren't also evicted for that. And we closed some state loopholes for new buildings. Um I think that was good. And I'm I'm happy with how far we got it. Um unfortunately, we weren't able to go to add other. Other things to it, um in particular because my opponent, who's not here, Mike Healy, voted against it. Um but also my other colleagues wouldn't, weren't willing to go farther. Um I do think there's opportunities to strengthen the regulation, um particularly, I'd like to um add some protections. For indoor air quality, um to make sure that gas stoves do not um create toxic air. To provide some protections around mold and leaky windows, um because those create health hazards. And then I think that I'd like to explore um making it for the you can't evict a family during the school year. Because um we know that that so much of a child's um education relies on them having um stable housing. And I'd like to make sure we can 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 ensure kids get a good edu- education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnacle, just to follow up. Um so if you are re-elected, are these uh. Are you, would you propose to work on these and to get these ordinances passed in the city of Petaluma?
I'd like to add, uh particularly, I'd like to go after the indoor air quality mold and leaky windows, those habitability measures. Um the no eviction during the school year was something we really explored and from a legal standpoint, we uh it was determined that we couldn't do it. But I think that I I'm hopeful that we, you know, might be able to to see another city take the lead on that and and show that we can. But absolutely on the indoor air quality and mold and leaky windows. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh question number three and the order for answering uh is gonna be you, Councilman Barnacle, and followed up by Mr. Keen. Uh the downtown housing and economic opportunity overlay proposes to modify building height limits. Lock coverage and floor area ratios in key parts of downtown to encourage new mixed-use and housing developments. However, there are concerns about how these changes might impact the character of downtown. And whether affordable housing or community benefits will actually materialize. How will you ensure that the new developments such as the EKN Appalachian Hotel project? Contribute positively to the downtown economy while preserving its historic charm and providing tangible benefits like affordable housing? Mr. Barnacle?
Thank you for this question. Thank you for the question. I um, this is the perfect question. Um but the overlay is an opportunity to turn vacant lots that are surrounded by chain-link fences. Um into businesses and homes for people. Um and the the EKN is the first project and that project is gonna generate a lot of revenue. Um and what I've been proposing all along is that the revenue from the EKN hotel goes toward things like affordable housing. And like um downtown beautification, um so that we see those tangible benefits. Because um the hotel's gonna create, you know, a lot of uh low-wage jobs. And in order to make sure that we don't further uh create a housing issue. We need to make sure that the revenue that's generated from that is invested in affordable housing. Um and that's something that I've been talking about right from the start. It's something that um I continue to talk about. Um and you know, we, what we know is that the biggest barrier to building affordable housing is the funding. And so um while my opponents are gonna oppose the overlay. They're not gonna be able to bring forward a solution to actually put revenue, put money toward building affordable housing. Um and I am, and that's because I'm the the candidate who's truly um focused on addressing our housing crisis. And know that it's not just a, you know, one thing or the other that we actually need to be looking at ways to generate funding. That we can put toward affordable housing, um so that we can um, you know, get more more families living in Petaluma.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Uh Mr. Keen, ninety seconds.
Yeah, I think the overlay is just a means to create this hotel that's out of scale with our downtown. Um I don't think it's actually gonna in help the economy of the downtown or is it gonna improve housing at all? Um I ran a business there for fifteen years in the downtown and. Uh our main problems are have to do with getting permits from the city to operate. A lot of those chain-link fences that you see are from businesses that would like to go into business. But they they can't get their permits from the city. Uh I do have, I have no problem if they create a hotel that's in scale with the historic downtown and fits in. That's fine, but this hotel only supplies about uh fifty-eight parking spaces. When at their peak, they might need a hundred and fifty to two hundred parking spaces. And that's not gonna help the surrounding businesses. I mean, people aren't gonna go to Rex Hardware on a Saturday. They won't be able to park. So there's lots of existing businesses downtown that already have an issue with parking and this would make it way worse. Um as far as housing, it doesn't do anything for housing. It just says you can build six stories now in full lock coverage. But it doesn't do anything else to incentivize housing. As far as generating revenue, if they move this particular six-story hotel by the train station. We'd still generate the revenue and we wouldn't ruin our downtown. So um I don't think so overlay is uh any good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Keen. Uh moving on to question number four and uh we're gonna start. Uh, moving on to question number four, and uh we're gonna start off with Mr. King yourself again, and then we'll have Councilmember Barnacle follow up. Uh, so follow up, um, Petaluma has an ongoing housing affordability crisis. How will you ensure that affordable housing developments are prioritized over luxury development, especially in areas close to public transit? And what will you do if developer developers push back?
Well, one of my main platform issues is to change the impact fees that are charged developers for developments. Uh, so impact fees are basically upfront costs that the city charges for infrastructure-related issues. And they charge the same fee regardless of whether you're making a two thousand square foot hound house or a three hundred square foot condo. And obviously, those two things don't have the same impact on city infrastructure. So I would change our impact fee schedule to be more logical, to make sure that affordable housing is the most profitable housing to build. Um, the, what they call affordable housing now is where you get these developers, nonprofits, they get these grants from the state and each unit subsidized, you know, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars per unit. And that you can't get many houses, houses that way, there's just not enough tax money. So I would change the incentive structure so that affordable housing is the most um profitable to build in Petaluma.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Barnacle?
Thank you. Um, this is an area, again, I just, I can't say enough about the the fact that I'm the one who's been championing affordable housing. Um, in my four years on the council, we've moved forward over three hundred units. Um, but my opponent, Mike Healy, who's not here tonight, he voted against a hundred and eighty of those uh units of affordable housing. Um, I'm proud that uh at our second train station, um, I fought to get a hundred and thirty-one units of affordable housing at the second train station. Um, I also um have been advocating and and moving forward for fifty units right across the street from the library that my opponent voted against. Um, and so um part of it is not voting against affordable housing projects when they come forward. Um, the other thing that we have to do is um, of course, we need to reduce our impact fees and we've already waived our impact fees for affordable housing. So that's already been done. Um, we've also um on the way to reforming our impact fee structure. Um, we've been uh, you know, the 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 name of the game here is um bringing uh projects to life and that's funding and that's how you need to make sure that you can do that. And um, in reducing impact fees is a is a very small part of the overall cost. Um, what really needs to be happening is we need to be bringing more capital to the table um so that we can help move more of these projects along faster because every year we have a very limited amount of money that we can put towards moving projects along. Um, and that's because we aren't generating any any funds for it. And um, again, that's something that I've been pushing for and and neither of my opponents are.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Barnacle. Moving on to question number five. Um, and you will be up first again, council member, and uh we'll be following up with Mr. King. Uh, we recognize that school resource officers, also known as SROs, are currently not on the table in Petaluma. But many other cities utilize them with a cost-sharing model between the city and the school district. Research has shown that SROs have been associated with negative impacts on students of color, especially in terms of higher rates of discipline and arrest. For example, studies have shown that black students are disproportionately impacted by school-based arrest and referrals to law enforcement. Given these concerns, what is your stance on the use of SROs in Petaluma? And how do you plan to ensure that student safety measures in schools are equitable and non-discriminatory? You have ninety seconds, council member.
Thank you. Um, when I ran in twenty twenty, um, people said uh, don't work, you know, the schools in the city don't really collaborate. They don't really work together and I didn't really get that and I didn't buy that. And we pushed for a lot of collaboration between our schools um because our school board didn't want SROs. And if our school board doesn't want it, we don't need to do that. But what we do need to do is be a a good partner. And I'm really proud that today um our school board and our our school administration and our city and our city and our police department, um, our safe team are all working very well together. And um, when there's issues on campus, um, our our police and our safe team are always there. Um, sometimes it's not that we need a police officer, we might need someone from the safe team to go because someone's having, you know, um, you know, it's 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 not a violent thing, it's it's a mental health thing. Um, and so um, really, it's about collaboration and partnership and making sure that um we're really well under- understanding what our schools need so that we can be there to provide the services they need. Um, but it's not about putting SROs on campus. Um, it's about making sure that our police are available and also making sure that we're doing all of the training on racial bias and things like that. And I'm really proud that we've been doing just a an immense amount of work um to make sure that our police have all the training they need around racial bias. Um, and um, you know, I'm, over and over again, I hear that Petaluma has the best police department in the in the county. Um, and and we have great relationships with our schools.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Barnacle. Uh, Mr. King, you're up. You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, um, I was a high school teacher at Petaluma High for a few years and um teenagers do dumb things and they don't need to be criminalized. So I don't support having police officers on campus. Uh, the traditional model of the, you know, vice principal, the principal, uh, those are the people that should deal with these things first. Uh, the police should be near at hand if if they're needed, but not definitely not on campus. I know that when I was at Petaluma High, uh, one of the things they were working on was restorative justice so that you truly have, you know, if there's a victim and a perpetrator that you work it out. Um, and I think that's the best way of going about things. You definitely don't wanna criminalize things, especially things that are minor. Because like I said, teenagers, they do dumb things. I mean, we were all teenagers and we all did dumb things and uh, it definitely should not be criminalized. So I support restorative justice, um, having the uh, school officials on site deal with most issues and having the police ready and knowing which police is representing your school, um, have them at the ready if they're needed.
Perfect. All right. Well, that's all the time that we have for you two this evening. Thank you again uh for your honest answers, for your time, for your effort. We wish you the best of luck. Please don't leave the Zoom because we're gonna convene all the candidates at the end uh for one final run of community questions. Um, so if I could ask Herman and the rest of the Los Cien team and to please uh bring on the next round of uh panelists or candidates, um, that'd be great. So, Mr. King, thanks again. Councilman Barnacle, thanks again. Wonderful job and I will see you in a few moments. All right. Good evening. Welcome, Mr. Hooper and also Mr. DeCarly. Welcome to uh our wonderful event this evening. Thank you for taking the time and the energy to be with us. Um, I'm gonna give each of you ninety seconds um to do a self-introduction. And just so that the rest of the audience members know, uh, these two candidates are running for District Five in Petaluma. Uh, so uh, Mr. Hooper, you have ninety seconds for your introduction. Please start us off.
Thank you very much. My name is Blake Hooper. I'm a candidate for Petaluma City Council, District Five. I've grown up in Petaluma for pretty much my whole life. Family moved here when I was three. I've lived in the fifth district that entire time. I live there now with my wife, Eliana, and we hope to one day raise a family there. I grew up in a working-class family and I saw a community in a town filled with active neighborhoods and boisterous families. And as I've gotten older, I've watched as a lot of my friends, family members and community members have been forced out. So that's why I got involved in public service early. I worked for Sonoma County Conservation Action, fighting for green belts. I worked for Congressman Jared Huffman, working with local constituents and folks in our community who are struggling with housing, with Veterans Affairs, with emergency response work, doing a lot to try and help our people in our community get by. I work for the California State Senate now in land use and economic development policy. I've served on the Youth Commission, our Transit Advisory Committee, our Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee, and our Planning Commission. And my focus and the reason why I'm asking for your vote tonight is that I wanna make sure that Petaluma stays a community that is multi-generational where you can still afford to raise a family, have a career and retire without having to move someplace far away and without the unfortunate fear that everyone you know and care about is eventually going to have to move because of how unaffordable our community has gotten. I know we can do the work as a council, as a
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. DeCarly, good evening. Welcome. You have ninety seconds for your introduction.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for having me. Uh, my name is Alex DeCarly. I was born and raised in Petaluma and I've been um part of a family that's that's been here since nearly the beginning of town. I graduated from Saint Vincent High School where I went on to attend uh school at Santa Rosa Junior College and began studying engineering. From there, I went on to Cal Poly and studied manufacturing engineering. And after that, went on to work in Europe, uh, as a short time in a biomedical engineering position. I came back to run my family's uh small business in Petaluma. We've had a propane company here for uh seventy-eight years now. And I've been uh managing that myself and and growing it and and rebuilding it for the last about eight years. Um, I'm now starting to move off in my own direction and in uh renewable energy and all alternative fuels and and clean energy, um, you know, because that's that's my business and that's what I've been into. And um, you know, I've done uh, I've done a fair amount of um volunteer and service oriented work um in in all my years, uh, but more recently, you know, I got involved in our our wildfires, um, doing animal evacuation from there, going behind the lines, bringing them to places like the fairgrounds, which is a great resource of ours. Um, I've also uh been involved in helping people who lost their homes, either customers or from places like Paradise where where we've gone out and helped them set up um fuel so that they can have hot showers and cook food and and, you know, donated thousands of gallons and tanks to do that. And then uh more recently, I've been on the Petaluma's Government Affairs Committee uh for the last almost year and a half now, I believe, uh, learning how our city works and meeting with many different groups that come that that are either already working with the city or want to and wanna do different things. Um, you know, I believe in
Mr. DeCarly, your time is up. I appreciate it. Very impressive uh history and background. Okay, so our, for our first question, we're gonna start off with Mr. Hooper and then Mr. DeCarly, you will follow up. Um, you we we will each have ninety seconds to answer um question number one. So the Latin population is increasing and is now twenty-one percent in Petaluma and even higher, thirty-five percent in Petaluma City Schools. Yet there are no Petaluma City Council members and few Latin members of the city's commission and boards. What will you do to increase and diversify representation so that Petaluma is represented by elected and appointed officials who speak for the whole community? Mr. Hooper, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. We need to meet people where they're at. The Spanish-speaking community is nearly a quarter of our population. We need to be doing the work to make sure that not only are our notices and our documents all uh bilingual, but to also ensure that we have full translation for all of our boards and commissions and public meetings. We also need to ensure that our meeting structures have changed so we're not asking parents and other people who are working full-time to have to spend sometimes three, four or six hours in a meeting at a time they might not be able to make. We can adjust meeting schedules, we can adjust agendas so that it's distributed over a month rather than at one time. We need to also do work to make sure that boards and commissions are at times that make sense for working people and make sense for this community. Uh, there is a lot we can do to also ensure that these meetings are in places that people can attend and people can access. We need to bring back Zoom and commu- and remote work, remote meetings so that family, especially working families, are able to then not only access the meetings in a public comment, but also be able to participate. And finally, we need to also do the work to ensure that from school to the workforce, our community members, especially this population, has the economic support and the opportunities to ensure that they have the time to do this and have the resources to do this, rather than having to fight so hard just to stay in the community. And there's a lot we can do, both as a city government and as a community, to get that accomplished. And that's what I'll be focused on. One of many things I'll be focused on if elected. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Uh, Mr. DeCarly, ninety seconds.
Uh, well, first of all, I think if uh, you know, if you Elliot or Herman stepped up, that might be a great thing, you know, in Petaluma.
We don't live in Petaluma, man.
Okay, well, but um, you know, I I think that uh I believe in giving people opportunity. Um, you know, I can only speak to myself personally, I guess, having never been a public servant so much. Um, you know, in in business, I've I've hired people from all sorts of backgrounds, um, you know, and and often I find that that diversifying like that makes it a really, really cool thing in business and unique. Um, you know, we we start with a lot of guys, they'll start at at lower positions and I'll train them and I'll work with them constantly and grow them into positions of you know, being a driver or manager, um, something like that. So I believe in in working with people and fostering them with with the skills that they have and helping them to to be to develop into a better person. Um, you know, I think that uh with with, like it was mentioned earlier, with the onset of districts two years ago, um, you know, that was supposed to make Petaluma more equitable and and I think they demonstrated that that would be possible. And I think now with with us going from, you know, seats one, two and three to now four, five and six, um, I'm surprised it hasn't and it didn't allow anybody to step up that maybe otherwise should have. So um, you know, and and I I go around to other city council meetings and and see other councils and you know, there's um, there's diversity on those and I don't know if maybe it's because they're more paid positions or or what the case may be, but I see other cities do it and perhaps we need to look to those cities.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. DeCarly. Uh, question number two, uh, Mr. DeCarly, you will have the opportunity to answer first and we'll follow up with Mr. Hooper. Um, since twenty twenty-two, Petaluma has had a tenant protection ordinance that guarantees rights for the city's tenants beyond the state's minimum requirements. The Tenant Protection Act of twenty nineteen encouraged, but it did not mandate local jurisdictions to increase protections by local ordinance. Petaluma was the first jurisdiction in the county to increase rental protections, recently followed by the county itself. Petaluma tenants celebrated the ordinance, but have said that it doesn't go far enough, exempting owners with three or fewer rental units, likely representing about two million or more in rental estate assets and real estate assets. Housing providers state that the regulations are onerous and likely to push housing stock off the rental market through conversion or sale. Here's the question. What is your position on the tenant protection ordinance? And are there any aspects that you would change, either augmenting or reducing the protections? Mr. DeCarly, you have ninety seconds.
So I think that uh, well, I'll talk about, you know, what what I can speak to personally again, which is that uh, you know, we've we've had many employees that have lived in in houses that my family owns. And and when we do that, we give them a significant break in rent because we want them to be able to afford to live and work here. And uh, and that's always been a, and you know, an excellent case that's helped us and it's helped them. And, you know, I think there's a lot of companies around that actually do do that type of work. And if we go back through history, you know, they almost call them uh, you know, company towns. And so um, you know, some of some of the best tenants we've had, to be quite honest, have have been um, you know, have been uh, you know, other diverse people. Um, you know, they've, some of them are like family to us, you know. We've always had great relationships and you see it in in the dairy industry as well, where um they're almost family, you know, living and working together. Um, I think that, you know, I think that rent control has has some unintended consequences. I think it it seems on the surface straightforward that it it protects tenants, but I don't know that it really does in the long run. I think that uh, once, once you start to constrain people, um landlords, you know, especially and I'm, when I say landlords, I'm talking about people that may own just one or two houses that that count on that income for themselves. Um, you know, that it doesn't incentivize them as much to own anymore and it causes you to get into situations where where they have to sell and then the tenant has to move and and then rents go up after that.
And Mr. DeCarly, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hooper, your turn. Ninety seconds.
Right, so my my wife and I have been renters for pretty much, well, our, my wife's entire time in Petaluma and ever since I left my parents' house. Uh, being a renter in Petaluma is an interesting experience because you have wonderful mom and pops, you also have some less exciting ones. And then you also have kind of these large corporate landlords that have interesting requirements and interesting issues that come up as you're just trying to get by and just trying to build a life here. I absolutely support what the council did with the rent stabilization ordinance. It was not full rent control, it was rent stabilization. I support the effort that was designed to help tenants because I've personally had bad experiences and I know that that can really happen in this town. I also think that we could add a rental registry component to it and would love to see uh habitability requirements implemented. It's also why I'm glad that we exempted landlords under a certain number of units because I do wanna make sure that our mom and pops are protected. And I don't think this is a question between whether or not you protect renters or local landlords. I think we can protect our renters on one hand and protect our local landlords on the other by focusing on making sure with the staffing and resources to make the regulation simple and easy to implement and understand and also making sure And also making sure we have policies in place to reduce and limit as much as possible the explosion of LLCs and other large corporate entities that are buying up our, a lot of our residential and small unit rental properties throughout the town. We do need to protect our local landlords and our local renters. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for our next question, question number three. Blake, you're going to start us off and Mister DeCarly, you will be up next. So the downtown housing and economic opportunity overlay proposes to modify building height limits, lot coverage and floor area ratios in key parts of downtown to encourage new mixed use and housing developments. However, there are concerns about how these changes might impact the character of downtown and whether affordable housing or community benefits will actually materialize. How will you ensure that new developments such as the EKN Appalachian Hotel Project contribute positively to the downtown economy while preserving its historic charm and providing tangible benefits like affordable housing?
All right. So first of all, I should say, and I've stayed this at other forums, I've stayed this online and at countless house parties at this point. I I don't support the overlays currently proposed. I don't support any iteration of the hotel that I've seen. What I do want to see, if it's possible, is do the work to bring back design review and expansion of our historic resources surveys. And furthermore, design standards that ensure that anything that is built in the downtown surrounding the historic district makes sense and actually references well the historic district and looks like it belongs. Right now, we have no protection in those areas, which is why most recently at the draft EIR session at the Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Committee and the Planning Commission that I serve on, we worked together to recommend many of these changes to be brought to the draft DIR and also be brought to the overlay. We were pushing for that as a sensible middle ground to get protections back so we can have a safe and secure downtown. So we can, in fact, create those regulations well before we'd have to wait following a general plan, which will still take many more years. The council, unfortunately, and then following meeting stripped much of that out. And for that, at this point, unless we're able to bring that back in, I'd be voting no on both. But what I want to do as a council member is focus on doing the work to bring those changes in so that we have an overlay that is actually a tool for bringing back design review. As for hotel, it has to make sense in the downtown. It has to have the parking that's required. It has to have a design that people can respect and understand. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister Hooper. Mister DeCarly, you have ninety seconds.
So I'm I'm not opposed to a smaller scale hotel that actually fits in and and complements downtown. I don't think that would be a bad idea. I think the the current planned hotel is not good for Petaluma. It does not, it's going to take away the charm. It's it's going to make downtown look bad and I'm not sure that it's going to even be built, you know, once built. You know, I think that you you consider the other three zones. Well, and actually too, to mention also that the developer is is on the verge of bankruptcy. He's not declared it yet, but I don't think we should be doing business with people on the verge of that. You know, the the rest of the three zones, we have the potential for six to nine stories. You know, we're the overlays to go up to six, but but out of our control with state density bonus laws, we could see as much as nine stories downtown. And I, that would absolutely destroy Petaluma having skyscrapers like that. The other, the other thing that's not talked about enough is, you know, beyond the hotel, if more is built downtown like that, anything within a half mile of major public transit is going to have no parking requirements. So if you're building housing downtown with hundreds of thousands of units, you're going to have hundreds of thousands of cars displaced downtown and with with nowhere to park and with traffic issues already, it's it's going to create a really bad situation. So Petaluma is a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty-six-year-old downtown that's irreplaceable, and I think we need to take care of that. And on top of that, I'm not sure why it keeps being said, but, you know, my opponent has twice now voted for the overlay. Most recently is a few weeks ago.
Okay. Thank you, Mister DeCarly. Going on to question number four. Mister DeCarly, you will lead us off in this question and then we will have Mister Hooper follow up. Question number four. To follow up, Petaluma has an ongoing housing affordability crisis. How will you ensure that affordable housing developments are prioritized over luxury developments? Especially in areas close to public transit? What will you do if developers push back? Mister DeCarly, you have ninety seconds.
So I think that first of all, Petaluma has done a good job reading its meeting, its arena and housing numbers. That's it's no secret. It's always been good as as those cycles come about. You know, what I would like to do is create a Petaluma where people can afford to own and and not just be able to rent. I I think that's the direction that we need to take things. And, you know, that's that's not to exclude anybody, but to, you know, rather focus on small businesses and and industry here. I, that's the lens that I look through with my business and engineering background is we need to, we need to really foster small businesses. Because that's that's what creates jobs. That's what keeps our economy going here. And so we need to take opportunity where we can to do almost a, I've kind of coined it an incubator, you know, for small businesses so that they can thrive and so that people, they can hire people to work there that can then afford to to live here. So.
You still have thirty seconds.
Yeah. So I mean, as as far as you talk about, you know, housing around major transportation areas, you know, it's it's, you know, sure, I mean, if if that's the case and it makes sense in those areas, then, you know, then we obviously we need a mix of everything. We can't just build one thing or another, but it has to be a good blend that serves all Petalumans.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister DeCarly. Mister Hooper, you have ninety seconds.
Right. So just to stay right off the bat, we've not come close to meeting arena numbers. We rarely come anywhere close to meeting what we need. In fact, we've had a development backlog for the last fourteen-ish years that has created a hot and cold development cycle. We are oversubscribed for luxury units. That is true, but everything else, we're falling fall short and we've almost been penalized by this by the state for that very reason. So my focus would be making sure that we have the opportunity for first-time home buyers and for seniors who are looking to downsize. Because right now in Petaluma, the two communities most likely facing shelterless status are our family age populations and our seniors. That is a death sentence for a future of a community if you lose the future and the past. So my focus would be on making sure that we have design standards in place and we re-modify the zoning to make sure that we can have cottage units, make sure that we can have row houses, duplexes, quadplexes and and smaller, smaller ADUs already pre-designed and built out so that small-scale developers can easily come in and bring those units to some of our smaller infill zoning lots. It's a big issue in Petaluma. We have a lot of small zoning areas, a lot of small lots where you could be putting these units into neighborhoods, expanding opportunities for families and seniors to get their foot in the ownership market. And we can require design that makes it look beautiful and like a good addition to those neighborhoods. We can really do that with our zoning and planning policy, and that's one of my biggest priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hooper. All right, moving on to question number five. For question number five, Blake, you will lead us off and Mister DeCarly, you will follow up. We recognize that school resource officers, SROs, are currently not on the table in Petaluma. But many other cities utilize them with a cost-sharing model between the city and the school district. Research shows that SROs have been associated with negative impacts on students of color, especially in terms of higher rates of discipline and arrest. For example, studies have shown that black students are disproportionately impacted by school-based arrests and referrals to law enforcement. Given these concerns, what is your stance on the use of SROs in Petaluma? And how do you plan to ensure that student safety measures in schools are equitable and non-discriminatory? Mister Hooper, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you very much. I don't support SROs. I support psychologists, counselors, mental health resources for our campuses. I believe that the city of Petaluma can expand the partnerships it already has with our school districts, especially as a pass-through funding source in order to get more funds to expand the number of wellness centers that we have on each campus, expand the number of family resource centers that we have, which are especially helpful for communities of color. And also it provide funding and help provide funding to add the counselors that we're sorely lacking, especially bilingual and multicultural counselors and psychologists. We need to de-escalate these issues early rather than hoping that we can resolve them when violence is already initiated. I spent a lot of time talking to both the current and former police chief. The conversations I've had with them is not to add SROs. The conversation is about how we help them elevate their community policing model so that folks in the community know who their local patrol officers are, which the city is already doing very well and our police are already doing very well. And knowing that we have the partnerships in place with our schools where if an incident does happen, the response time is there and ready to go. One thing I have seen other communities do throughout the state and other parts of the country is focus on funding the mental health resources we need while also having some security on campus. You can have, you can hire private security for that, have somebody who's there to help immediately call the police if there's an issue that comes up. But frankly, we need to focus on addressing the problem early, not waiting till it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Cooper. Mister DeCarly, ninety seconds.
So I guess I I feel kind of old, but I guess I'm not really that old. But I I do remember back in school that I I don't remember having these sorts of problems, to be honest, or seeing them very much. You know, everybody got along pretty well, but I I won't pretend to be an expert on SROs. I've actually never read into them very much, so it's it's hard for me to say one way or another if it's something that Petaluma needs. But I will say that we do need to support safety in school, period. I think that's a priority nor no child should feel unsafe or targeted in in any way. You're in school to learn. You're in school to better yourself. That's and and have friends. That's why you're there. You know, it should be a environment where everybody feels safe. You know, I think that we have an excellent police force and other resources like the like the Safe Team. I think they've taken great care of the schools. I've seen what happens when, you know, when there are incidents, how they step into action and and how they protect students and faculty and and neighborhoods surrounding them. You know, I know that I've talked to PPSC before about, you know, programs that they have where where they take students that have, for whatever reason, gotten in trouble and they counsel them and they work with them and you know, it could be behavioral issues or mental issues, but they work with them and and they have an extremely high success rate in in keeping those those children from becoming repeat offenders or falling down a worse trail. So that's that's the kind of stuff we need to focus on.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister DeCarly. Thank you, Mister Hooper. That wraps up our questions for this group. Please do not leave yet because we have, I have more questions for everyone. And we have a lot of questions from the audience as well. So I'm going to invite and I'm going to ask the Los Cien team if we could bring back all of our candidates for this evening where we are going to have our last set of questions to everyone. Everyone's going to have sixty seconds to respond. And we will go from there. I'm not necessarily going to give an order in terms of who's going to respond first or last. But I am going to be timing everyone's answers. All right. One question that I want to start off this group with that I had prepared for everyone, but we ran out of time in the group sections is in regards to the M Group. Okay, so for fourteen years and welcome back to all our candidates. I hope everyone is still here with us this evening. As I was mentioning earlier, I have a couple of questions for the entire group. I'm going to give everyone sixty seconds to respond. And then we also have a lot of questions from the audience as well. So this first question says for fourteen years, the city of Petaluma has outsourced much of its city planning functions to M Group, a private firm that has become the city's de facto planning department. This arrangement was a topic of a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury Report, which found that the city did not conduct regular performance reviews of N Group and did not evaluate the cost-effectiveness of this arrangement. In the city's response to the grand jury, it stated that it completed a cost-benefit analysis last year and that the contract with N Group is favorable to the city. The city response also notes that N Group performs many more functions than simply processing planning and development applications, including involvement in many aspects of city government. Petaluma residents have expressed concerns over a cost-focused approach versus local-centered planting. What do you think of the arrangement with N Group? And what, if anything, would you do to cancel, modify, or maintain it? Who wants to go first? Mister Hooper, all right, you have sixty seconds.
Right, so I would, I would absolutely focus on bringing back our planning in-house. We need to build out a full department and also expand our permitting staff. So I would focus on building out the management that we need and the mid-level staff, kind of a spoken hub approach. And that would take place over several years. The reality is we have competing budget priorities, especially with new infrastructure for our public safety resources. So it would be important that we build out a long-term plan to bring this in so that as time moves on, we're increasingly increasingly in-house and we shrink the contract until we move on entirely. We can absolutely have some contract planning for, you know, specialty or or niche planning needs that would be outside the scope of our everyday use. But we can absolutely bring our our planning resources in-house and we need to. Public was right to stress that we've kind of changed where we're at. There was a period of time where we were such a budget deficit that we weren't able to really bring that in-house, but now we can start to really do that process.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister Hooper. And just for, just so the rest of the audience knows, we are missing Mister Frank Quint. Not sure what happened, Mister Quint, if you are hearing us or if you want to jump back on, please do so. Who wants to go next with regards to this M Group? Mister DeCarly, you have sixty seconds.
So I support bringing planning back in-house. You know, I've I've been vocal that I don't think the M Group has done a good job. I realize that that's not a, you know, like a flip of a switch. You just all of a sudden have in-house planners again, but you know, so it it will take time. There's some institutional knowledge that needs to be preserved in that because we don't want to just start from scratch. But I will say that, you know, with them group, there's there's a few examples I have to kind of show that they've they've not done a sufficient job. First is Walnut Park Grill and, you know, that's that's the owners of of Elroy, you know, part of the Latino community and and they've owned it now for at least a couple of years. The M Group did not give them, it would not give them permits over some ridiculous stuff. And so it's really hurt their business and their ability to thrive and help their community. And then the other is, well, I've got ten seconds, so I'll just say that, you know, I've 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 not supported M Group and I think they've hurt many businesses time and time again.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister DeCarly. Who would like to go next? Mister Jay.
So I actually have firsthand experience with them group in as the planning department, the permitting department. When I built the brewery, Petaluma Hills in twenty thirteen, I never received my permits to actually build the brewery. And I had a difficult time focusing the planners, the the people responsible for permitting at the time on the unique aspects of a brewery with a taproom. Because they couldn't understand that separation and they weren't willing to work with me to define that. I wound up building a brewery without permits. I got in trouble for that, of course. Fix that. The brewery was fine after that. But the 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 problem I faced is that they weren't focused on solving problems. They were more protecting the aspect of the city. We need to change that in some way.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister Jay. I appreciate it. Mister Keen, Mister Barnacle? Who would like to go next?
One of the main reasons I'm running is to bring our planning back in-house. I don't think the M Group has served us well. I think their incentives aren't the best. They're basically a for-profit company and when projects get approved, they get more money. And I think we should plan things based around what Petaluma needs. Also, their permitting function function is very horrible as far as businesses gets concerned. I've heard lots of horror stories. So I would like us to bring the planning function back in-house. Now, the fact that we outsourced everything means that they have the institutional memory. So I would support bringing it in function by function, starting with permitting, because I think that's where they're falling down the most. So I definitely support bringing, I mean, back in-house.
Perfect. Thank you, Mister Keen. Councilman Barnacle.
Yeah, I think this has been asked at other forums, but I support bringing it back in-house too, especially the key roles where we want to bring that in to build that institutional knowledge in-house. I I just got to say that what my, what Mister Keen said was incorrect, that they do not make any additional money when they approve projects. They're, the way that they get paid is basically they, you know, they're actually incentivized to drag a project out and spend more time on it. And that is, you know, it's incorrect what he just said and we need to make sure that we're grounding our our discussion here in actual facts and not just rhetoric. We, you know, bringing it back in-house is is the right thing to do. It's and we can do that. There is a reason why it was outsourced and that's for cost-cutting reasons during the recession and And it's just a matter of time, you know, we've rebuilt our city over the last four years. And this is just the next thing that we have to improve.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Barnacle. Mr. Quint, welcome back. Sorry that we lost.
Yeah, sorry about the technical difficulties. My apologies for that.
No worries, no worries. We're taking questions from the audience now. And the first question that I read for everyone right now was in regards to the M Group. So it says that for fourteen years, the city of Petaluma has outsourced much of its city planning function to N Group, a private firm that has become the city's de facto planning department. This arrangement was a topic of a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Sonoma County Civil Grand Jury Report, which found that the city did not conduct regular performance reviews of M Group and did not evaluate the cost effectiveness of this arrangement. In the city's response to the grand jury, it stated that it completed a cost benefit analysis last year and that the contract with N Group is favorable to the city. The city also, the city's response also notes that the N Group performs many more functions than simply processing planning and development applications, including involvement in many aspects of city government. Petaluma residents have expressed concern over a cost focus approach versus local centered planning. What do you think of the arrangement with N Group? And what, if anything, would you do to cancel, modify, or maintain it? You have sixty seconds, Mr. Quint.
Yeah, sure. So I'd be, I'm supportive of bringing planning back in-house for sure. You know, I would say, you know, one of the things that I haven't heard other candidates talking about, and I think it needs to be said, is our, you know, the folks that work for the M Group in our community, they're part of our community. Many of those people were doing the planning functions before it was the M Group. And, you know, they're part of our community, they're good members of our community. And I would say a lot of the problems that we've been dealing with are institutional problems that were in place prior to Peggy Flynn and taking back over. Peggy Flynn has done a terrific job starting to get our city back on track. And I support her, and I think she's doing a great job getting things, making things better. And, but I do believe we need to bring that back in-house.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Quint. All right, so the first question from the audience from this evening. Those is this, if elected, how will you protect the nine hundred mobile park residents, many of whom are Spanish-speaking, who own their own homes, but are faced with closure, arbitration, and more? Who would like to go first? Mr. Hooper, you have sixty seconds.
Thank you. So I just want to say our mobile home parks essentially represent our last bastion of affordable housing for our senior community and for many of our communities of color. If elected, my focus there would be in making sure, number one, we're engaging with those communities in the language that they actually prefer. So everybody is able to be fully engaged in the process. I'd want to make sure that we are not only strengthening our rent control protections for our mobile home parks, but also make sure the city is working aggressively with, working aggressively to put together policies to help restrict some of these efforts that the property owners have used to try and harm and scare a lot of these renters and owners from being able to survive in the homes that they've effectively want to live their life in and retire in. And finally, I want to make sure the city works these mobile home parks to actually help them orchestrate buying these properties so that we can have them be city-supported affordable housing for these community members.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Hooper. Next taker?
I'll go. Yeah, I think this is one area where the city is actually doing a very good job. I know that the city attorney is looking at the statutes of the city and making sure that the rental protections that are in place are being enforced and that there's not any loopholes that the mobile home park owners are trying to get around. So, and also, as Blake said, definitely have, you know, work with people in their own language. It's pretty easy to find Spanish speakers to help work with that. So definitely I support keeping our ordinance strong and making sure there's no loopholes to, for landlords to get around.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else? Mr. Barnacle?
Yeah, I've been a part of this now for, you know, over a year. And it's truly, it's a very emotional, probably the most emotional, emotionally taxing issue that the council's taken on in my whole term because of just how, you know, how insecure these people feel with their housing. I've said that we need to enforce, strengthen, and, you know, enforce and strengthen our existing regulations. And as Mr. Hooper said, we are working to try and help them acquire the properties. And the other thing we need to be doing is just making sure that we're doing as much communication with the people who live in these communities as possible because there's real mental health ramifications of having your house and you're, you know, just truly housing insecurity. And so, you know, we're doing, we're doing as much as we can on this. And it's something that we're just gonna have to continue to keep, keep working at.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Barnacle. Anyone else? Mr. DeCarly?
So I think you have a really fine balance here, and it's a different situation. It gets compared often to affordable housing, which is often subsidized with tax dollars. Whereas with a lot of these trailer parks, or at least the ones in Petaluma, that's not the case. These are privately owned, but still expected to be giving the same kind of cuts as affordable. You know, it's, and that's where it makes it hard. So it's if you force, if you force them to do something that puts them out of business, because that's what they are, a business, everybody loses their homes. But at the same time, you can't raise the rent so high that nobody can live there. That hurts the business, that hurts the people as well. So I think the city needs to work with both to find middle ground and a solution that both can do. Because, as has been mentioned, you have an aging population that, you know, has, a lot of those people have lived in those trailer parks for years. And, you know, and then those people have owned them for years. So there needs to be a balance and there needs to be some middle ground that's found.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarly. Mr. Jay, I saw that you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'll keep this brief. I agree with Mr. Hooper, Mr. Barnacle on this. And I applaud the current city council for their stance that they've taken against the owners of these parks to the point of making it difficult for them to close the parks unnecessarily. So, yeah, I, like I said, I echo Mr. Hooper and Mr. Barnacle on this one.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jay. Mr. Quint?
Look, if these folks lose their homes, they'll have to leave.
Mr. Quint, we lost your audio for a little bit.
Sorry about that. Anyway, I fully support the measures that the city has been doing. I think they're doing a great job. Of course.
All right, thank you. My next question for the group, serving on city council is often seen as a challenging and thankless job with the potential for a burnout. At the same time, effective communication with your district is essential. And the city relies on active engagement from community members who attend events and provide input. How do you plan to manage the stress of the role, maintain open and transparent communication with your Latin constituents, and encourage greater community participation and city initiatives? Who would like to go first? Mr. Hooper, sixty seconds.
So two things. One, one thing that really helps is I grew up in my district. I lived there most of my life. I currently reside there with my wife. And because of that, it's very easy for me to know where I need to go, what events, which parts of the district and community I need to be in to make sure folks practically know what's going on. I've served on a long list of committees in the city because I'm committed to making sure that Petaluma is livable and making sure we have a bright future. So I've really learned how to handle that work-life balance, really learned how to handle the workload that comes with it, the meeting packets, the emails, the discovery to try and find more information as you go into it, all of that. And as for specifically engaging with our Spanish-speaking and Latino community, a lot of that's gonna be me focusing on going where people are. So it's not just enough to have emails and digital communications, social media. It's going to those pockets of the community. And to be honest, most of the Latino community is all over Petaluma. Going to them, reaching out to them early to tell them what's going on and get them engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Anyone else? Mr. Barnacle?
Yeah. So my digital communication reach is, you know, over three thousand. So I've got that as a tool. But really, as Mr. Hooper said, it's about going into the community. One of the areas that I've been really proud to push and push for is building our relationships with the school. Because a lot of the schools have connections to our Latino community because the children are in schools, as you mentioned already. You know, over thirty percent of our schools are Latino, right? So working with the schools is a good tool to engage them and bring them into the public process for the city stuff. Outside of that, it's, you know, working through our nonprofit partners and organizations like Los Cien, like North Bay Organizing Project, those organizations that are already doing that outreach, the Sonoma County Tenants Union, to make sure that we're, you know, tapping as many channels as we can to bring folks in and bring folks in where they might have interest and bring folks in where they need to be engaged. And there's areas where there's always more work to do, but I'm proud of the work we've been doing on that front. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else? Mr. DeCarly, you're up. Sixty seconds.
So I, here in Petaluma, I've been here my entire life, with the exception of moving overseas and going to school. And I know this town like the back of my hand. And I've had decades and decades and generations of knowledge passed on to me in Petaluma of what's worked, what hasn't worked, what's been tried before. And so I bring that to the table, you know, whereas I'm maybe not a career politician or aspiring to be one myself. I do bring that real sense of Petaluma and what that means, you know. And I've been saying it all along in my campaign that I want to be a voice for every Petaluma, everybody. You know, whether they like me or don't, or believe in what I do or don't. I want to bridge that gap. And what I've been doing so far this whole campaign is, is just that. You know, I've brought together an incredible team of people that come from all backgrounds and they like me, they believe in me and what I want to do. And I want to continue to work with them and everybody else who's willing, who's willing to come to me with questions and concerns.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarly. Next candidate? Mr. Keen?
Yeah, as part of my campaign, I actually have a newsletter I've been creating called the Keen Observer. I do think there's a lack of transparency within our city government, so that's one of the reasons I'm running. And I would like to keep people in the loop of what's coming up. Also, I had a Mexican grandfather and you put a little bit of Spanish on Los Hispano Blantes. So I can, you know, talk to people in both Spanish and English and also French, but that's not very useful around here. So I would keep, you know, keep people in the loop. That's one of the main things I would like to do if I go on council.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Quint, I saw that your hand was up.
Yes, sir. So for this, I'm gonna turn my video off while I speak, hoping that that will improve my audio. So anyway, if I may, it's really, so I'm doing this as a community service. I enjoy getting out and talking to folks, talking to organizations. And really, it's about continuing to engage with our leadership organizations, our nonprofits. And I heard it mentioned a couple of times, you know, really going where the people gather and being willing to listen first and understand what people's issues are. And then, you know, working hard to try to make effective change. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Jay?
Yeah, the outreach is, is pretty standard, you know, newsletters, social media and everything. I think the key is that I want to remain as accessible as possible so that when people reach out to me, that I can respond. And I really strive to do that when I get an email from a supporter or just someone who has a question, to try to deal with that as honestly and forthright as possible. So I think the communication process is, and there are many avenues to get information to people. I think the trick is to be as receptive so that the people, my constituents, would know that I'm listening to them, that I'm striving to understand what their issues are.
Perfect. Thank you. Our next question from the audience is Mid Penn Housing built a large affordable apartment complex with minimal parking. Assuming residents will walk or ride a bike, will you continue this policy of allowing reduced parking for housing? Who would like to go first? Mr. Quint?
Yeah, again, this one, this one for me is pretty easy. So I think about the facility, the building that was built at four fourteen Petaluma Boulevard North. It has forty-four units and twenty-one parking spaces. And while twenty-one parking spaces seem absurd for a lot of people, really, if we were, if we would have told Mid Penn, no, you can only build thirty units so that you can have thirty parking spaces. It really means that there's fourteen families that aren't gonna be able to have a home. There were twelve hundred applications received within the first day or two for that, for that facility, for forty-four units. And it really highlights the need for housing. And if we tell Mid Penn that they can't build it because there's not enough parking, it just means that we're telling people that having a place to put your car is more important than having a place to put your kids.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Quint. Who's next?
I was reading that question and couldn't hear you with an audio.
Yeah, Mid Penn Housing built a large affordable apartment complex with minimal parking. Assuming residents will walk or ride a bike, will you continue this policy of allowing reduced parking for housing? So, Mr. Hooper, sixty seconds.
No, I largely agree with what Frank just said. We do need to prioritize and focus on making sure that we have more affordable units, not less where possible. A lot of Petaluma's parking minimums come from a time when the math was largely done based off standards. People have forgotten, this stuff goes back to the sixties and seventies and a lot of our zoning and land use code. What I would focus on though is making sure that we have the relative planning in place so that if we are allowing for less parking, there's reasonable public transit in place, reasonable access to alternative transit. And if we do need more parking in the area, also discuss how we can do cooperative shares with shared parking and other options. I think it's not gonna be one size fits all across Petaluma. I think there's cases where we're gonna need to be really strict about parking and other cases where we really need to prioritize the units. And a lot of that has to do with where these projects ultimately end up going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Mr. DeCarly, sixty seconds.
So as the question was stated, I don't, I don't think you can make assumptions on parking and who will use public transport or any other form of transportation. You just, you can't do that at the expense of the rest of the community and the city. You need to make sure that they're adequate. And if it's a matter of updating to, you know, current parking numbers per unit or home, then that's what it is. But you can't just, you can't just say that, well, people are gonna, people are gonna use other forms of transportation without even knowing who's going to be living there yet. So, yeah, that's pretty much my answer.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. DeCarly. Mr. Jay, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I largely agree again with Mr. Hooper and Mr., well, Frank in this time, Mr. Quint, sorry. But I think you have to be careful about, in the form of that I do favor, I think we should favor increased housing over parking. Don't get rid of housing availability for the sake of parking. That said, you have to be very careful at what the lack of parking does to surrounding neighborhoods and the community nearby. For example, we've got a development going in here in District Four that has less parking than would be available for the residents for the new housing. That parking is gonna overflow into the neighboring neighborhoods. So we have to, we have to consider, kind of like what Alex said, it's not a one solution for everything, one-size solution for everything, but you have to be careful about that.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Who's next? Mr. Keen, sixty seconds.
Yeah, our transportation system is not well-developed enough to Yeah, um, our um, transportation system is not well-developed enough to assume that people are gonna get by without a car. So I would generally support having one space per housing unit as, as a minimum. And depending on where the location is, if they're in a place where there's adequate street parking, then yeah, you can have less parking. And I also support decoupling the cost of parking with the unit so that people would rent the parking space separately from the unit, because maybe one unit needs two spaces and another one doesn't need any space. So, and also there should be a couple of spaces for visitors and deliveries. I mean, people, you know, order food and things like that. There should be a place for the um, delivery person to park. So that's my stance.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Barnacle?
Yeah, um, this is, you know, an important issue. Are we building housing for people or housing for cars? Um, and like Mr. Quint, I'm, I come down on building housing for people. I'm in prioritizing that. I think my opponent, Mike Healy, who's not here tonight, um, voted against a hundred and eighty units of affordable housing because there wasn't parking. And they were directly adjacent to transit and services and things like that. And so um, if we, if we're serious about building housing for people, then we have to provide, you know, promote the units. Um, because as, as Mr. Quint said, you know, twelve hundred applications for forty-four units. Obviously, there was twelve hundred people that had applied for those units that were more interested in housing than parking. And um, as a community, when we think about our values, um, are we more interested in making sure that there's, you know, three parking spaces for every person who lives in Petaluma? Or are we more interested in making sure that the people who cook our food, who teach our children, who bag our groceries can actually live here? Um, because otherwise we're just becoming a wealthy, um, you know, bedroom community. And that's not the community that I grew up in. It's not the community that I want to um, live in.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Barnacle. All right, gentlemen, that concludes our evening. That's all the questions that we have. Well, it's all the time that we have for these questions. Um, so I want to thank you all again uh, for your warmth, for your time, your energy. I would now wish you all the best of luck. I know that we're coming down to the last days uh, of this campaign cycle and I know GOTV is right around the corner and all that fun stuff. So I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you so much. Uh, if you have any follow-up questions or like to follow up with me, you, you know, we find me through the Los Cien website. I also work for the Petaluma Health Center, so you can call over here and, and reach out to me anytime. Uh, now I'd like to pass on the microphone over to my great friend Herman G. Hernandez, uh, who I'm pretty sure was watching the football game tonight. I don't know if he was paying attention. Who's winning, Herman? Who's winning?
I forgot about the football game. I literally just woke up. My timer woke me up right on time. No, I'm just kidding. I know the Dodgers are winning, which is boo, but I want to echo what Elliot uh, just said, just thanking the candidates and good luck. There, you're about uh, less than three weeks away. It's a lot of work and the whole Los Cien board and our staff really appreciate you taking time out of your busy week and your Thursday evening. Um, for some of you who are still watching, as well as the candidates, the recording will be available on Los Cien's YouTube. Uh, once um, myself or Magali have the time to upload it, so we're probably gonna have it up there by this Monday, maybe sooner. Also, please, you do not have to be Latinx, Latina, Latino, Hispanic to be a Los Cien member or attend any of our programs or events. So everybody is welcome, including the candidates here. Um, and we are having our fifteen-year anniversary birthday bash on November eighth. So please join us if you can. Um, thanks again to our volunteers uh, who put this together. Anatamayo, Ray Holly, um, Patrick McDonald, Elliot Enriquez, Arlene Smith. Um, and huge appreciation to Betsy Chavez for providing tonight's um, interpretation. So thanks again and remember to vote. Uh, and have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having us. It was a pleasure.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a wonderful weekend.
Thanks, Paul.
And I wasn't taking a nap. I was, that was a joke.